All this meeting of the policy subcommittee to order, Al, what have you got? Uh, no public comment, nobody said public comment, alright, good.
Nope, so the first thing on our policy is animals in the school. And I know that Chief came and spoke to me, we have two policies right now that are in our policy handbook. One is service animals in schools and one animals in schools. And Chief, you wanted to talk to me a little bit, we had a couple of conversations regarding the, the dog for Berlin. Um, and he asked if he could come and speak to us a little about what's happening in Berlin, especially in the town and the schools as well too.
So, you know, obviously we have Jack's labeled as a comfort dog.
What, four, uh, how long now, a year?
Yeah. A year now.
Yeah, two months.
Uh, you know, not allowed in Berlin Memorial School. Um, there's eighty-eight school districts in the Commonwealth that have dogs in their school, comfort dogs. I don't wanna be the one that doesn't allow it. You know, they're proven to be a success in communities, it's not just for schoolchildren, it's for, it's for the entire population of the town. Um, but obviously having two-hundred-and-fifty kids, uh, one central location, it'd be nice if the officer could visit. I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna just walk in there anytime, everything will be scheduled. Um, you know, obviously we have to Sergeant Gilchrist reach out to it on the community. You know, there's always the allergy concerns, whatnot, just like anything. Um, you know, so, so we know those parameters that have to be set. Uh, it refers to be allowed in a school, we just don't have car wash to walk in whenever we want. Cause we do know it's disruptive to a classroom if we just walk the hallways and peek our heads in the classrooms. So, our biggest thing is obviously comfort dogs are not covered under the policy. Um, we can say the policy is for students, not for the police department. Um, but obviously we want to, um, you know, do this amicable and, and on, on board with each other. And we just wanna include comfort dogs in school.
And just the policy IMG, animals in schools, is like if a school wanted to have a turtle, or they want to have a bunny in school, they want to have a pet. Like, that's where this policy really falls.
So, usually within the classroom is when they use it?
In the classroom, in the school, right? People wanna bring in hamsters, they wanna bring in certain animals like that, that's where this policy really lies. Service animals is, is, is another whole type of thing, and then there's the comfort, the comfort dog, yeah. So, again, not only has the Chief reached out to me, but many people in the communities reached out to me and really feel like this is a spot that we should be able to at least be allowed into the school. Um, in speaking with the principal and the administrative assistant there, um, they, they had a little, I think, pushback, if I can say, to, to the Chiefs um, about it, so I thought this is a place for us to bring it to our attention, talk about it and move forward. I, I know that many of my colleagues, so I reached out to my superintendent friends, and many, 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 many of them have these in their schools at this point right now.
What is the difference between a comfort dog and a therapy dog as far as this goes?
Nothing.
Yeah, okay.
So, what happened was is when they change it to comfort, some people don't wanna have the label that it's a therapy dog. And they feel like they're gonna be labeled because they need therapy. That's why I went to comfort.
And this didn't fall under the exception of all law enforcement dogs would be dogs that are enforcing, like, I got it, yeah.
So, you know, our thing, and, and as, as you, you are probably well aware, we work very well with Boils. Whether it's Tohoto or Boils Elementary School, like, we wanna be able to come over, like, uh, Sergeant Gilchrist does work with Putten Elementary School. You know, on a mutual aid agreement, so, um.
I, Al, I'm confused about why it's not allowed, haven't you gone in before with dogs?
No.
But why, so, under the way this is written, why wouldn't it be allowed?
Look at the top part, the first line.
Right, without prior permission.
Right.
But, you know, you're not just gonna, like you said, you're not just gonna walk in, it's gonna be scheduled, it's gonna be agreed upon.
You know, again, this isn't going to be for someone with a disability, this might be someone that they just need, something could've happened in school, right? Um, something could've taken place, um, it could've been a tragic, uh, death of a student or whatever it could've been, and, and then they bring the dog in and it, it brings comfort. And so what they're trying to do, and I'm speaking for your Chief.
Yeah, no, we're just try, trying to make it so that it is allowed, um, there's no policy issue. Um, you know, like the superintendent said, if there's a tragic incident, we'll have seven of these dogs there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so like, otherwise, you just, on a somewhat scheduled basis, you're looking, just come around?
We probably put it out, let teachers sign up, we come in for fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Story time, whatever.
Yeah, but the piece that is, they need to start bringing the dog in with students now, right? So, as this dog is being trained and getting familiar with them and getting used to them as well too, so all of a sudden, God forbid, if something happens and we bring the dogs right in, that might cause different reaction, right? And so we wanna start bringing them in now so they can get used to them, start seeing them, and so it's not just, uh, you know, when something bad happens, the dog comes on board. Like, kids are developing a relationship, and more importantly, the real dog is developing a relationship with our students and our school.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we could come up to Tohoto at lunchtime and, I mean, I'm all for it, but my confusion is why this says it can't happen. I, I don't see any way anyone would say it doesn't.
I'm, I'm in complete agreement, and I, I, by the way, I think it's wonderful, I really appreciate this effort because animals, uh, they, they, they lower your blood pressure. There's something wonderful about having them close by, so I really appreciate that, that you're doing this.
We even have a, a release form in here.
So, so the gray area is, is this dog is not really considered for disabilities, people with disabilities, right? So, it's really not covered underneath that policy. So, I believe that some of our administration is following this letter to the law for policy, right? And so this is not a, uh, anyone with a, with a disability, this is a comfort dog.
Okay.
And it doesn't fit in the umbrella of that.
So, we just add in co- comfort or therapy dog, is that how we would change it?
The, the other part I'd like to have, and I've seen in a couple of different places where the superintendent has the discretion to allow, we could just sort of.
I thought that was in this one.
Nah, if you read that last one, the superintendent schools are designated, shall be responsible for development procedures to accommodate a student's use of assistance, animals in district facilities and school transportation vehicles, but we could, do you have some verbiage from somewhere else?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't, we, uh, we actually talked to a few other school districts and they're like, no, we don't have anything in writing, we just accept it.
Yeah, alright, well, I see, so, two things, real quick, on this IMG, animals in school.
Yep.
Third page, second paragraph, it says the handler has to be a district staff member, so we can easily just add in here, or a member of the police team or a police department or something, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we just do public safety.
Public safety, okay.
You've got it, yep.
Yep.
Alright. Like a, uh, public safety member, employee?
Representative, maybe?
Representative?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know the fire chief is training his Dalmatians as comfort dogs as well, so.
And, and I know also the Chief has, downstairs has a dog he's working with as well too.
Alright, and then the last line in that one says the superintendent shall approve and designate a handler. Can we not just say something about, uh, superintendent can approve this program, or do we have to make it as a whole program? I mean, I, I honestly, I'm confused about why it's not being allowed in the first place.
Do we have to designate a han- do we have to do that? I mean, because where it might change, where it might be.
So, so I, I think, you know, where we're gonna come into an issue with that is, is if Sergeant Gilchrist isn't available and say the Harvard officer comes, or the Boils officer comes.
Yeah.
You know, that's why I think it just should, just should say, uh, public safeties.
So, Mike, I know you're looking underneath IMG, animals in school.
Yeah.
But is it a benefit underneath IMG-A, service animals in school?
I mean, I don't.
And just put maybe, keep it as simple underneath that last paragraph, the superintendent schools are designated, shall be responsible for development procedures. But maybe just put one other verbiage in about the superintendent can allow.
Comfort dogs.
Comfort dogs to, and this way it's sort of, service animals are closer, comfort dogs are closer to service animals than they are closer to animals in the school.
Yeah.
Sure.
Are we comfortable with that?
Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're not here to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just a small tweak to the policy will, will allow it to happen.
Yeah, so superintendent may choose to allow comfort dogs? And then, you know, they obviously comply with all the other things in the policy, training, uh, health and all that.
Yeah, everything, everything, yeah, all those health certificates.
Yeah, I don't see why that shouldn't be a problem.
So, can we just maybe, does this work? That last sentence, the superintendent schools are designated, shall be responsible for development procedures to accommodate a student's use for assistance in among the district facilities and on school, um, transportation vehicles. This is also to include comfort dogs to be available in our schools. I'm making it up on the fly, so feel free to.
Yeah, that's good, and then, uh, part of your policies and procedures will have some sort of, um, regular schedule or something like that, right?
And, and I think it sits better underneath service animals in school than just animals in school.
I think, right.
Yeah, exactly, even one class he went to, uh, trying to get permission slips from all the parents.
Yeah.
Um, which was fine, but I mean, it's, uh, like I said, it's all scheduled, not, not.
Yeah, not randomly.
Drop in, turning learning science lesson into petting a dog lesson.
Yeah, right.
Um, you know, like I said, we're not there to disrupt, we're, we're there to support.
So, so Chief, I will make sure on our next admin, once this goes to school committee, full school committee, a vote.
Yeah, we'll put it for a vote on Tuesday.
Then I'll make it on the next admin meeting, I'll make sure, so let me just get to my, my admin meeting, which is the following Wednesday. Uh, so if they vote on Tuesday and we have a meeting on Wednesday, um, then we'll be able to go from there.
Perfect.
And maybe those initial ones, that maybe me and you go there together to visit, and then I, so gradually release you into the schools.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay, I mean, I'm for it.
Good. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
You're good, you're good. Does it work?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, Chief, I appreciate it. Thanks, Jacks.
Thanks, Jacks.
It's this holiday card.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Holiday card, that's awesome, let's do that.
Oh, is that for the dog?
You can have it, you can have it.
It's really cute.
Oh, oh my gosh.
I, I think that's the right thing we did.
Yes, I think so. And I, and I appreciate that the policy was being followed, I mean, cause it really is the discretion of the principal, so either way.
Yep, yep. Okay.
What do we got next?
Student absence and excuses. So, we're gonna do a removal first, right? So, we've had a little bit of, oh, sorry, for removal.
It's cute, thank you.
So, this one has been living there still, and we need to remove JH, it never officially.
You voted on it.
Yes, we did, I was gonna say, but it's still there.
When you Google it, or when you.
It comes up and go to the policy, it's in there, yeah.
It's still there.
So, did you guys officially vote to remove this?
Yes.
In a full meeting?
Yeah.
At a full meeting?
And we changed it to something else, I think.
That's the next one, yeah.
The next, yeah.
So, so who's officially removed this?
I don't, Nicole does. But this, we may have voted for this with other people in between, Nicole, do you know what I mean, like, we, so, it might have been, it might not have been Nicole, it might have been Lisa that was here.
Okay, so this should officially be off there.
Take it off, yep.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure we have that, okay?
Yeah.
So, with that being removed now.
Can I have one of your soft government candies?
Help yourself, that's why they're there, please.
Oh, my gosh, they're like so fun.
They really are.
Here is the original of the other JE.
Yep.
And now, what we want to do is revise, here's the revised edition of JE. Yeah, uh, no, sorry. So, we're gonna remove completely JH, gone, Nicole will take care of that.
Yep.
And now, we have the, the original that JE looks like, and now we wanna have the revised version of JE. And Lisa, you wanna walk us through a little bit of the change?
Sure, so, if you look at this part, the revised part, cause this is the last part of the, the other one.
Oh, okay.
So, this part right here.
Yep.
The wording is changed. So, it just sounds better?
Yeah.
It ju- it just, just sounds better, it, it, it's really, and then nineteen ninety-three, I changed develops into establishes. Better word.
Oh, yep.
Um, guidelines, we don't want guidelines, seem suggestive, whereas standards seem.
Official, yeah.
More official.
Sure.
And then, on the next page, um.
Big, uh, visual, visual advice.
Let's see, in the middle, after four, oh, there's letters. So, in the, so number, so we added that, so, so number two, where it says class attendance, take, striking class attendance and just putting attendance. And, so we're, um, so the original is here, so it's class attendance, we're striking class attendance. So, now we're looking at two, but that two is going to be here, and we're adding links to the letters.
To the letters, I like that.
So, so that people are familiar with the letters.
Mm-hmm.
I'll have it on my phone, I'm just looking at my notes.
And then, on the second page of, this is the original document, and this is the new document, so on the original document, you're looking at exceptions. Parent excusals. Um, two per semester, I mean, two per trimester, three per semester for illness. That's just to follow because the elementary schools are on trimesters.
Smart.
The per semester, it's all the same, it's six per school year, but we run on semesters. So, there's two semesters, but three trimesters, so that just makes it more clear.
And we're just trying to make sure it's consistent. So, across our district, all the schools, this is our attendance policy, which you guys want as a school committee, have one that's consistent.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Do you wanna say questions to the end, Lisa, or do you wanna take them as you go?
Um, we can take them as we go, just so we can, um, I think?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So, in that first paragraph, the, the revised document, first paragraph, number two, it says after the ninth absence, there'll be a loss of two and a half credits. This applies to the high school?
So, it says in the middle high school, after four and eight absences from class, a form letter will be sent, after the ninth absence, there will be a loss of two and a half credits and the letters will be sent home.
So, is that ninth absence per semester? How do you, how do you, how do your courses, how do the courses run, are they full year courses or some semesters?
Some, some of them are, yeah.
So, you're treating, you, you're talking about taking away credit for absences. So, in a full year course, you get nine absences, and then on the tenth, there'll be a loss of credit? What if that course is only a semester?
Right.
So, you have to have, would that be the fifth absence for a semester-long course?
That's a good question, because semester-long courses are also only worth two and a half credits, correct, instead of five?
Right.
So, that might just need some clarification there, you know?
Right, make a note of that, because we, we, there is, right, we do have to make a note of that.
And then, I guess, just a, a note of that would be, it's only the high school students that are earning credits.
Right.
Yeah, just for the high.
So, we gotta add that piece too, right?
So, what is the consequence for middle school missing nine?
I mean, typically, we, we go through the same procedure, but there's no loss of credits, it's Saturday school to make up the time on learning.
Is loss of credit something typical around the state?
Yes, because if you're, if you don't have so, you know, that time, but, yeah.
Right.
But it's just the high school students across the state that are earning credits.
Yeah.
But, to, to Mike's point, so after the ninth absence, there'll be a loss of two and a half credits. So.
And maybe we put in there if, for full year courses.
Yeah, for full year, if it's a half year or something else.
For a semester course, there would only be two and a half credits, so then, therefore, they wouldn't get any credit for that class.
But they'd also, are they gonna miss, I mean, if you're missing nine in a semester, that's more serious than if you're missing nine throughout a year. So, what's the significance, you know, at, at what point do you lose credit for a semester course? Is it five absences, less, more?
Yeah, like, would you lose half of the two and a half credits, I don't, I don't know, if that's been something.
You need to do it per semester.
Can I make a suggestion? So, you got a handbook, right, and this is a policy, right? So, is the policy maybe says, after nine absences, there will be a loss of credits and a letter will be sent home. And then, the credits that you've broken down from middle to high school takes place in the handbook, cause the handbook's broken up into middle and high schools. This way, the policy is this big.
Right.
And then, the handbook, but, see what you guys think of that, but then the handbook will have the specifics of it.
I think that, yeah.
Because then, then your policy keeps getting more specific, more specific.
Yeah.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, but we're intending to vote on this Tuesday, right, cause we gotta get the handbook sorted out.
How were we at the handbook?
With the, with, with the, um, with the.
All the changes that we were gonna do, yeah, this was included, right?
Um, yeah.
Are we, well, let's have the, call me, are we, good, we, getting, so is the handbook been approved for this come, this year right now?
Right, so the, the.
Through December.
Through, through December.
Okay.
And you, and specifically, it was, um, the.
The linkage of the attendance.
The, um, the attendance and, um, the failure.
So, have, um, we could talk about this offline later on, but are we, have we moved on the handbook at all?
The athletic, uh, we've been talking, the athletic committee had a meeting today, and I provided you some information that I was thinking about.
Okay.
Um, this, this was the piece of it, and, um, the, the other, the, um, failures was the other piece of it.
Okay.
So, we need to.
So, the, the handbook's been approved through December.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the school committee meeting is going to be on Tuesday, so we're probably not gonna be ready for that. So, we, we might have to look at talking to school committee about making it for the very first meeting in January. Or really pl- plowing through, although it's a shot week this week for sure, but we can talk about that after.
Okay, alright, yeah, so you, you work on the language for number two there.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question, what if a student is hos- hospitalized, does that fall under something different, or?
So, if we, um, if we look down, um, there is.
Cause I, I don't see it under the exceptions, I, I assume it's in here somewhere.
Right. Oh, it's waiver.
Waiver, yep.
Yep.
I see it there, thank you.
And that usually comes with doctors.
Doctors, no, absolutely.
So, that all. Um, okay, any other, any other questions on the back piece?
Yeah, uh, just going back to the beginning, number one, attendance, paragraph A, one, or maybe even earlier in here, I'm not sure. Are we talking about absences period, or are we differentiating between excused and unexcused?
So, the state, the state does not differentiate between unexcused and excused.
Cause then we go, later on, we talk about excuses?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, and so that's kind of, um, local control. We have local control and what we identify as unexcused and excused. And, but the state does not.
They just count them all?
They just count them as absences, it's part of what is indicated, you know, in our accountability.
Even like a hospitalization, like you mentioned, they would still count that as an absence, yeah.
But we, it's, we used to change to like, we have a reason for it, right? So, an absence is an absence, if you're on our president's school, we need to have that documented. God forbid something happens to the school, we don't, we, what, Mike's there, or Laurie's there, not there, but we might have a, our excuse, our reason for them being out that we can agree upon, cause they're doing something, but the state just says they're still not president's school.
So, to what end, basically, is what I'm asking, so basically, the state wants to know anytime you're not there, period. And then, what we're saying is, we understand there's multiple different reasons why you might not be there. At a certain point, there has to be some sort of consequence for you not being there, otherwise, we're good to go.
Right.
Alright, so that's where the excusals.
Yes.
But all of our official, we have to send the state, it's gotta be accurate, right? So, if a kid's not there that day, like.
That's all they care, they don't care about why.
They don't know, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and I think the last, the last change is under other. Um, we took out, we just eliminated, so in the original document, there, there is a, a D, that's exclusion notes from a doctor and then this must be given to a main office within fourteen calendar days. We're, we're taking that out because we've been getting a plethora of doctor's notes that are um, just blankets.
Oh.
And so we wanna eliminate, um, we want higher accountability for specific dates, so, and not blanket um, statements by physicians.
That's under dismissals?
Under other.
Other, other what?
Number seven.
Other what, though? I, yeah, I see where it is, but like, what does that mean, other what? Just other miscellaneous things to consider? Okay. So, isn't there somewhere in here that says if you're out for like three days in a row or something, you need? Yeah, all notes, yeah, D, one D. Notes to be given in the office prior to, or on the day of return? So, you don't care about doctor notes at all for illnesses anymore?
Oh, yeah, we, we, we do, but we, um.
Where's that? Cause what I was looking at was under one D, all notes given to main office on the day of return. Notes from parents, don't excuse absences, tardies or dismissals, just verify them. The only exception is a parent excuse for illness. And then that refers you to two E, but then there's no two E.
Yep, below.
Two stops at D.
Well, you know what, I'm wondering if these are labeled off.
No, I'm looking in the revised one.
Okay.
Yeah, under, so I'm, I'm in one attendance, number.
Right, one D.
D, yep.
Okay.
And I think that.
And that refers to two, which would be exceptions, E, paragraph E, but there is no paragraph E.
Oh, yeah, good catch.
It would be two, it would be two D.
So, that's a change.
It would be two D.
Why am I leaving B, C, D, E? You're in one.
It's referring to two D.
I know, but is there double E there?
Um.
Oh, and two, yeah, I see the way that, I got it, yeah, I got you, okay.
It's supposed to be D.
Yeah, it's just.
Oh, yeah, the way, the way it falls out, it looks like there's two E's.
Okay, got you, okay, good, yeah.
Lisa, can I ask you a question, as a parent, I've always wondered this. If you're giving an excuse for your child, do you want a physically written note, or is an email okay?
You can do an email.
Okay, I was just curious about that, yeah. That's how you're sure, is we'll get to the office as well?
I just, I just don't understand how.
Instead of coming home and in the pocket.
D just doesn't seem to make sense. Notes from parents, do not excuse, okay, they just verify them, alright. The only exception, two parent excuses for illnesses. I guess if we had two E, we might, it might make more sense, but as it reads.
Well, it's two D, now it's.
Notes from parents, don't excuse absences, but on the exception here, they will excuse absences.
Yeah, like if you can't get a doctor.
They get two, they get two, they get two parent excusals.
Cause if they're sick, too, not sick enough to go to the doctor, but too sick to come to school, or something like that, it gives you the opportunity to excuse them twice.
So, when they're excused, they don't count towards our nine?
Our punishment, yeah, whatever the punishment, I'm using punishment as a blanket.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, like, the excuse, that's what I was assuming. I appreciate that you put the letters in there too, that's really helpful.
But does that make sense to a parent? I'm, I'm just looking at it again. So, two D, the only exception, two parent excuses for illness as described in two D, right?
In two D, which is below that.
Parent excusals, two per trimester.
Absence is not coming towards that maximum limit.
It says for illness.
It's just a, it's a big, it's a big old circular reference, it's just confusing.
Like, it doesn't need to be clear, but like, for illness not managed by a doctor or something like that, I don't know. Is that unclear?
Yeah, it might just need to be rewritten and clarified.
Right. Parent excuse, uh, uh, cause I think we're, we're, we were adding the two per trimester, three per semester for illness.
And I think, Lisa, it makes sense to us, I think the way we're looking at it, what does that look like for a parent?
To a parent, right.
So, it's like undoctor documented.
Right. It's like when your kid has a fever and they shouldn't be going to school, but they don't necessarily really have to go to the doctor.
Exactly.
So, you know, but we don't want, we, we also don't want it excessive.
We're only allowing two of those in three months, is that reasonable post-COVID world?
It, it's only if not, then you multiply by, by that by ten, in this twenty days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of absences.
Extended illness, you could get a doctor's note for.
Well, and I figured, like, if, if your child is sick, let's say, four times, two of them are unexcused.
Right.
And they just count towards the nine.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, everybody's all up in arms since COVID, like, if you got the sniffles, stay home, cause you don't wanna be a super sprayer, yeah.
Right, that's good.
You know, so, but if parents think, oh, I can only do that twice until my kid gets in trouble, uh, maybe it's okay, I'll just give him some Tylenol and send him along. Maybe it's okay, I'll just give him some Tylenol and send him along.
And and it's more that way, Mike, right? Cause parents are working, so they send their kid a couple Tylenol, send them off to school. It's more we're seeing seeing that and then us having to call their parents and and send them home. Right on cue.
I mean, if you think it's reasonable, then fine, I'm just bringing it up.
This is the way it's been for like for a long time, and it and it's working, and it's been a long, and I think it it. Causes people to think about other absences.
I I can say when my kids were in high school, I mean, because the workload is different in high school, to miss a day is bigger, or even middle school than. Than in elementary school, it's there, it's all important, but.
Right.
One of my, one of my motivators was how many absences do we have? Let's talk about when we, when it's okay to go, like what we can work through, what we need to stay home for. So it is, I think it's an important conversation that's right there in the handbook.
So so we have to fix one, one D, one D. Right, we gotta fix that.
Uh, and then one A two.
Yep, and one A two. And then we gotta really look at two D, right? Just making sure that that makes sense to parents. And it might be just as it stays, but we just wanna make sure. So can I ask you, with those small changes? Can we bring this to school committee on on Tuesday? As you guys need to vote on.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like, I'd like you to, but uh, another thing, one C. Vacations taken during school time will be counted as absences. And people do that all the time, right? People are always going on vacation during school time, for whatever reason. Does that not contradict? Or does that not defeat, does two D? Let me start over. Uh, two D simply says absences not counted toward the maximum. Uh, an exception would be apparent excusal. When you put it in parentheses, it makes it seem like that's just an example.
Two, well, two per semester, that, I mean, that is the limit. So at the elementary school, there's two per semester and at the middle high, there's three per semester.
But you're saying those are only, you're saying that's specifically only for illness.
Yeah, right.
Unless it should say apparent excusal for for illness and then the parentheses.
I think that's better.
Okay.
Cause I, when I read it, it's just my interpretation of it, it seems like whatever's in parentheses is simply a suggestion.
Yeah.
But it could cover other things.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a good point. Yeah, it might be as clear as we can in this policy, we can refer parents back to it and say, so we're gonna save for illness.
Vacation during school time.
I I mean, is it, is it worth putting in for C for vacation unex- as unexcused absences or just leave it as absences?
I think it's just absences.
Just so you know. C doesn't, doesn't have much weight for us, right? If we're gonna put it in here, it just doesn't have, it doesn't have as much weight as we wish we had.
Yeah.
Hashtag bad dad. Alright. Anything else?
We go with that. So if we make these slight changes, Lisa, Renee and Sally, then we can bring it to the school committee for.
There's one other change I made, I'm just curious about at the end.
So when a student is absent, uh, oh, oh, is just because you don't, um, so at the elementary school, they. They use a dismissal management system.
Yeah.
And at the middle high school, we we call, so we don't have that same system. So it was just a a note of clarification because they were like, oh, my gosh, the elementary school, do we have to call now? We just wanted to make sure that.
So that's when, yeah, so that's for an absence. There was something on dismissals I had a question about to uh.
Can I just ask a question? Why, I know, I I noticed that they do use that at elementary school. Is there a reason why they don't use it at the high schools? Is it just not?
I have no idea. We just never.
Oh, it's Monday, it's, okay, gotcha.
Pretty sure it's a budget thing, cause when we were talking about busing.
Yeah.
And knowing which student is on which bus last year, I think that came up. It, I know that there's some, some pieces, you know, just in general, like with power school, that middle high probably should integrate, it's just. Budgetary thing.
Gotcha, thank you.
But it's something that we definitely should be looking at.
I agree, just for, especially because the district is growing so much.
I don't know about B S, but B M S is fantastic, but I mean, you just, whatever you want your kid to do after school.
That's wonderful. I think that would be super helpful.
Uh, well, I feel like if you train the parents, like if the parents are, like, you know, I mean, like you get used to something, and then when you go to the high school, they already know how to use it, it's gone, yeah.
So that's what we're trying to do, right? Even with the professional one we have today, like consistent.
Well, because I feel like if you have a system that does that, a person, we don't have to might hire more people because a system is handling it, the person can deal with other things.
Um, just under four dismissals. I think we should just add some flexibility in there for dismissals that might come up later in the day, cause it says all notes must be handed before the start of the day. And that's not reasonable in every case, so maybe just some flexibility in there. Uh, it's dismissals must be handed in as soon as possible before the student's dismissed, something like that, you know?
Prior to dismissal?
Right, yeah, something like that.
Or even should be handed in?
Just cause, you know. Yeah, maybe most times you know your kid's gonna get dismissed for some reason. But there's always that situation that comes up where.
Last minute.
We used to put the words in whenever possible, right?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
All dismissal notes, whenever possible, must be handed in before, right?
Right, yeah, that works, yeah.
Those were the two words we put in with.
I I, it's just me, but I I almost feel like not necessarily in the policy, but it might be worth telling parents that they can email because I I. You get it done right away, you don't have to count on the child, and not that I don't think we should be giving our kids opportunities to be responsible, but. It just makes it easier on our our administrative assistants, you know what I mean?
Every time I call kids down the office to say, oh, you have some, oh, I have that note.
Right, exactly.
I just, I mean, we we do that at middle high, I just don't know if we should perhaps check. If they are, you know, the, you just brought up a good point about the the handwritten notes, is that something that elementary is?
No, they use that system.
Oh, see, that would, that would totally get rid of all our.
Yeah.
I think we, I think we stumbled on something here, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, more often than not, parents are calling or emailing than students bringing in a note.
One way for the elementary schools and then they go to high school.
I don't think that's good. Well, and again, that's taking someone off of a task that they're.
But I I I have a note.
I mean, yeah, it's mu- it's a money issue, who knows if we can do it, but if we can do it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So all, so we can write for all dismissal m- notes must be emailed. Emails or handed in before the start of the school day.
Whenever possible.
Whenever possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's uh, if you can get that.
Should, do you wanna put the person like to the, should you say who it's to, like to the administr- uh administrative assistant?
Well, I think that can then go in the handbook.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah, yeah, you're right.
So if you can get this language updated and we can get it, we can do it for a vote.
Yeah, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's time to get the attendance part piece in there and get it, and more importantly, get rid of the other line.
So are we taking, just one question I wanted to ask, at the top, it says if the parent cannot be reached notified, we get, we're taking that out, correct?
Yes.
That's the only one.
Okay, that's what I thought, cause it's not followed.
Cause we went, when we met with the chief of police, they said, what?
Yeah, well, no, well, because not only is it not followed, like, do you know how distracted parents are? Like I send my kid in with a note, you know, or or I. Have a good intention to call the school, but the kid's sick and you're, yeah, you're tending to them. No, 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 they have enough going on, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make those revisions and get those, so we can put them into the school committee agenda and we can do, take care of.
Preferably before the end of the week.
You got it, yeah.
Yeah.
These should be easy, these should be nothing.
Yeah, cause I have the document of, you know.
Alright, just get that to Nicole, we'll get that in there.
And do you think you could keep the highlighted parts for the changes for the committee? It's really helpful when you're looking at it, thank you.
Agreed, okay, good. Next one is student dress code.
Is that this one?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. So here's the original. So it's come to our attention by families when I went to, I know we don't call them P T Os, um, but the the meetings that we went to. Um, parents are concerned about student dress code, that's all this is, right? For this, I know that we've had some conversations and people have brought to my attention as well too about adult dress codes. Uh, that will be something we'll be talking about, certainly when we're talking about contract negotiations, but the policy is for our students. So here's the original, here's the revised um for student dress codes.
Yeah, so the top half basically stays the same, right? It's just the B B R S D dress code prohibits, the following is what's added, yeah.
So this has been something that's that, first of all, I noticed and I apologize because I'm coming from the private Catholic school world, right? Uh, but also parents have brought it to our attention, um, as well as many other people about the exposure of under, and this is not male or female, this is both, right? Exposure under garments and private parts. Uh, by the way, we worked on this as a group here, um, of administrators. Um, clothing that includes obscenities, words, pictures or symbols that are vulgar and are suggestive of vulgarity. That promote or advertise weapons, violence, alcohol, drugs, tobacco, prejudice. Sexual innuendos that encourage inappropriate behaviors that knowingly will incite others or the disparaged beliefs or heritage of others. The biggest one after that as well too, that teachers have come to me multiple times is hats, bandanas, hoods. Sunglasses, handkerchiefs or other items that cover the head or face and interfere with identifying a student that are not allowed. Um, upon consultation with the administration, exceptions may be made, cause we do have some situations. For items um worn due to religious or medical circumstances. Um, and that last part is B B R S D administration is committed to engage in conversation with students regarding dress. When necessary to come to an understanding of student clothing selection. Every effort we made to ensure these conversations maintaining the privacy and comfort of the student. If a violation is determined, it still will be required to change into acceptable clothing. If there is not, if there's not available, perhaps we're required to bring appropriate clothing to school.
Can I ask just one question?
Sure.
Where it says, um. After that encourage, the second bullet, um, that encourage inappropriate behavior, and then there's a comment that says that knowingly will incite others, is that? Does that have to go with the encourage inappropriate behavior or is that just a s- a s- something on its own?
It's something on its own.
Who decides if it's.
That's what I was just wondering.
Yeah.
That's actually, it's part of the um legal jargon with, um, there is a.
Cause the state's got a couple of big court cases right now about stuff like this, my hometown, actually.
It, um.
Yes.
Tinker, tinker, um, that's the law case and it and it uses that insights length of that, of that language. So that's that, um, I think, because that piece it had came from our handbook, I believe that that's where that came from.
We need something more than the dress code we are currently have right now.
I I completely agree, I'm just nervous, I'm in, I'm nervous about the interpretation.
Who decides?
Yeah, who decides what incites others and, um.
Or there's knowingly.
Yeah, well, just, I just think of like, I mean, we just came out of. A summer of like, just, politics were high and. Doesn't, if people wore political things regardless of what side they were on, would someone say you're inciting me or you're upsetting me? Like, I just feel like it's such a. It's such a gray area with free speech.
I'm pretty fired up that Al's wearing a vest in the middle of winter, but I mean, that, does that, I mean, I'm excited, but.
So, so again, I can't tell you how much we need some sort of dress code in this district.
No, I agree with you.
And I would.
And I love all of this, by the way.
Be comfortable, and Lisa, I'm speaking, but you guys live this world more than I do, cause you're boots on the ground, that incite others. I I I appreciate what what Laurie and Mike are saying, that knowing will incite others, I I would be okay striking that.
Striking, right, and so it says that encourage inappropriate behavior or that disparage the beliefs or heritage of others.
Yes.
Just leaving it that.
Just because of the interpretation, I get nervous about that.
The biggest thing.
Yeah, inciting others is inappropriate anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yep. The the biggest thing on those, let's be honest, is bullet number one and bullet number three. Those are the big ones, two, the second bullet, that just was important, don't get me wrong, but the inappropriate.
I wear my sunglasses at night. Is that really a problem in schools?
And these bullets, from my understanding, a lot of this has already been in the middle high school handbook.
Yeah.
Yes, I think this is great, and I really appreciate the part about hats, I mean, I grew up in a different generation where when you walk in the building, you took your hat off, you know, and I I just think.
You're going into nice restaurants.
But, yes, and people were, I.
But adults are too.
Adults, that's the, that's it.
This is not just a student thing.
Yeah, but for, for this. Right, this is, for more important, that's, that's really, the safety, cause you can't see. So if if the, you can't see their face with the hood, you can't see their face.
But it makes it funner, if if that's a word, that that later on you can have crazy hat day.
Yes.
You can have things like that, where it's a reward to wear their hats to school.
That was a big deal when we had those days.
I'm doing spirit weeks, you guys.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's different, yeah.
So should we put something in there about that? Cause uh, what you just said, right, if you do like a spirit day type of thing.
Like an exception.
Maybe we should put an exception in here for something like that, because uh, you know, we had an exception for dogs, but we still had a dog issue, right?
Um, for. Under the principal's discretion.
Well, again, this is a policy, right? Is there something like in the handbook that we can, there's.
Exceptions can be made with prior requests through the superintendent or something like that. For for special events or something like that. Yeah?
Yeah, I I would, I'd be okay with the hats, bandanas, hoods, some other items that cover the head or interfere with identifying a student. Uh, upon consultation with the administration, exceptions may be made for items worn due to religious or medical or.
Or special.
Or special events.
Or school sponsored.
Yes.
Yes.
School sponsored, special. Events. So when it comes to hoods, a lot of kids wear hooded sweatshirts just to stay warm, is that what you mean? So you're just saying just don't put the hood up?
Yeah.
Yep.
So you can wear the, you can wear the sweatshirt, just don't put the hood up.
It's a daily, I mean, that we're telling, I mean.
Again, it's just the identity, it's a safety.
It really is, cause if you look on the cameras, you really can't necessarily always tell in a crowded hallway when somebody has a hood on.
Should we just add like general face coverings to this to?
Well, uh, nope. For the eje.
Right, well, that would be, that would be, uh.
Yeah, well, that would be under religious, so that would be okay.
But if someone, I was gonna say, but if a kid, yeah, if someone wanted to wear a mask if they had COVID and they decided they felt comfortable wearing it.
Would that be considered a bandana? Like they, some people wear the bandana around and then lift it up?
No, I think that's specifically a mask, yeah.
And that would be, I guess, under medical circumstances.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
That's true, yeah.
This is a huge lift, right here with uh, student dress code. This is something I felt like from the first day I walked into Tohato, right, not just Tohato, but as well other schools that we need to get a stronger dress code for.
The only other word to change, just because you're changing the way the policy is laid out, is that third paragraph? It says requirements set forth above, just change above to here in or something.
Oh, right.
Yep.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
So if we can make these slight changes, we'll present them to school committee on Tuesday. And then we can go full steam ahead with newsletters that come out from all of us, our schools, about this is the new dress code, starting the first of the year.
Okay, you have the attendance one, Lisa, right? I have this one, I can do this one, okay.
Usually for policies for votes, we usually put it as a first read first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But we we have been known to just put it straight to a vote before, and I think because of the handbook situation.
Well, I also think because it's, there's so, there's such minimal changes, they're already existing one.
I'm sorry, you guys are right, I've done this.
No, but that's okay.
Well, I think they also should go to vote Tuesday, if you wanna get the handbook wrapped up before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, that's fine.[1772.41]